To order, and I'm just going to turn it over to the city manager.
You're going to do a roll call?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm going to do a roll call. I'm ready to roll.
She can breathe.
And then I can breathe, that's right.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shinholster. We have talked a couple of different times during my report in the last six to eight weeks about, in conjunction with the county, making a change in our comprehensive plan so that we can apply to be a broadband-ready community. And part of that need to change the comprehensive plan brought about the need for a public hearing. The Board of Commissioners have had their public hearing, and I've been working with Susan Lanford from the Regional Commission, and she and I got together, and she advertised the public hearing, which is tonight, and we're going to do that in conjunction with a presentation from her so that she can let us all know what the changes in the comprehensive plan will encompass. Basically, the purpose of the hearing is to brief everybody, you all, everybody watching the process used to develop the amendments to the comprehensive plan, and also to give everybody the opportunity for public participation and to obtain input on this broadband-ready application. So with that, I'll introduce you to Susan Lanford from the Regional Commission, and she's going to give you her presentation. I'm going to share the screen with you, and I know she'll be happy to answer any questions that you have when she gets done.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. As Mr. Griffith said, I'm Susan Lanford with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And as he noted, about two months ago, the county reached out to us about wanting to do an amendment to this plan so that they could apply to be a broadband-ready community. And the basic purpose of this is to really help place Baldwin County and the city of Milledgeville as a priority list for thinking about future investments, particularly as more federal and state funding is made available for broadband expansion. And as we all know, this need for broadband expansion was made more apparent in the past year as we all went home for school, for work, et cetera. And so that's kind of what we're here today, is just to do a quick presentation on what we even need by broadband, but then to also get some input from you all on what are some of the goals that you see for the city, and then what are some of the things and strategies we need to be considering as we go forward through this amendment process. So just a quick thing on what does broadband even mean? It is the transmission of wide bandwidth data of our high-speed internet connection. And so for the state of Georgia, they mean a download speed of 25 megabytes per second and an upload speed of 3 megabytes per second. In this, you would be comfortable streaming smartphones, computers, smart home systems, gaming, video calls, telehealth with reliability. In places that do not have this download and upload speed, you may be much more limited in terms of you can only watch Netflix and use the internet. You can't use your smartphone or those things all at the same time. And so thinking about this, we really want to think new technology continues to come online that requires more internet connectivity and capacity. And so that expansion for broadband and those high-download speeds and upload speeds is going to become more and more necessary as time goes on. So as we said, why is it important? We noted there's an increased need for broadband community-wide, and that's a need for all developed areas to be served by reliable internet service. And then, as I said, also preparing for upcoming funding for broadband expansion. So what is the purpose of this planning process we've been doing for the past couple of months? The first thing is we want to identify areas of need in unserved and underserved communities and neighborhoods. And I believe in the report that Mr. Griffith sent out to you all last week, we included a map that we overlaid some broadband data along with community services, along with residential density, that's going to help inform some of those priority areas that we may want to think about prioritizing and planning for. The other purpose is establish these long-term goals for broadband service plans, and then create the criteria and priorities for that strategic development. So what is an action plan for deployment of broadband service in the community? So Mr. Griffith noted, we held the kickoff public hearing with the county about six weeks ago, and then we wanted to come to the city and make sure that you all, as it is a joint planned amendment, if you're interested, had the opportunity to share your thoughts as well. We'll then be developing goals and action items, and I know that there's been a variety of conversations already held with various providers and other community members about some of those goals and action items. We will then have a final public hearing in which we'll review all of those presented to the public, and then bring it to each local government for adoption. So steps: complete the broadband planning process, which is this amendment, and then have it approved by local governments in the state, then adopt a model broadband ordinance. And the purpose of this ordinance is to streamline and standardize development of broadband infrastructure so that you have something that's already in place when service providers are looking to expand their service. Apply for the broadband-ready designation, again, making the community more competitive for public funding opportunities, and then pursuing the state and federal funding opportunities. And I know some of this is already happening right now, and so this is just kind of that additional step that's going to make the city and the county a little bit more competitive for some of those funding opportunities. So what I need help with from you all today is kind of what are the goals that you want to think about for broadband access in the community? You know, what does it look like for households, for businesses, for education? Are there places that we really need to prioritize, making sure that broadband gets to first? Do we really need to make sure that it's focused for economic development, or really thinking about residential? Are there any existing community initiatives right now to expand broadband access? I know that the county may have completed adding wireless routers at all of their fire stations, so that's something that's already occurring. And then what is the city's role in this broadband development and growth? And so that's it for me, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and please share your thoughts and feedback on what does broadband look like for the city going forward.
Something I would like to add in here. The Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority has, for several years, been working on, and I believe has successfully submitted, an EDA grant to expand broadband access to the state hospital campus for economic development purposes, but also to provide additional broadband access to an underserved community on the south side of town where you have spotty, at best, internet, and when you do have it, it's not super fast. So I just want to put that on the table. That is something that we have been working on, and I believe the county has been working in conjunction with the redevelopment authority on that grant, and the city has also participated in some of the preliminary filings for that grant. So that is at least one part of our broadband plan here in the community.
And it would probably be helpful, Councilman Reynolds, to get Susan a copy of that EDA grant, I would think, so...
Yes, absolutely.
I think I have the most recent copy, and I'll check and see, and if so, email it to her, if not, I may contact you to see if we can get it from the redevelopment authority.
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to assist with that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other initiatives that the city is pursuing right now related to broadband expansion beyond that one?
Hank, I believe that there was some discussion a while back about a new fiber provider, and it may have been looped in with the EDA grant, but a new fiber provider running a line from here to, I want to say Augusta, along the Fall Line, and that was supposed to be something that the city would be looking at tapping onto, the universities were going to be looking at tapping onto, and the hospital, I believe, was looking at adding onto that line as well. Would you bring that back around into the conversation for us?
Yeah, I will. That was actually initially based on a provider that was interested in providing some redundancy on fiber that did not go through Atlanta. And the conversation initially started with the city based on the fact that we were brought in by Georgia College, and that particular fiber line was actually going to originate, for lack of a better word, in Augusta, come down through McDuffie, Warren, Hancock, to Baldwin County, and then turn back up and go back towards Atlanta, most likely, probably at least to Newton County, to pick up some probably dark fiber that they had in Newton County, quite frankly, based on some of their economic development work that they've done up there just off of I-20. When I last contacted that provider, they had cooled things down just a little bit because of funding needs, but a big part of that was also a shared data center that the city might have owned and then leased. But I think probably that's something that the redevelopment authority is looking at doing in their potential expansion. And in conversations with that particular vendor that we were working with, they determined that the need for two data centers probably did not exist. So really, it was going to come down to who funded the one the most, as to whether it got put in. But I need to circle back around and contact those folks back and see if they still have some interest in running the fiber. Our library has done a good bit of stuff already in terms of providing some near-access Wi-Fi signaling at their building, as well as putting some white space signal in our city parks. Those are already in existence, so I can get you the specifics on those. And we probably need to break Georgia College into the discussion, too, because, like I said, they were the initial driving, the previous vendor that we were talking with, in terms of their need for redundancy on their peak network. So those are things that we've had going on with the city, at least initially.
Are there any priorities for you all in terms of thinking about broadband deployment? Is it really making sure that all residential development in the city has access, or is it making sure that public facilities have access so that people can use that internet?
I would think that it would behoove us to ensure that future developments do have the infrastructure in place for wired broadband access, whether it's through the cable company, the phone company, what have you, but to make sure that that is something that is included with infrastructure moving forward. I think that high-speed internet access is going to be as vital and necessary as water and sewer service, and anything that we can do to encourage that to be built as new developments go online, I think would be the appropriate thing for us to do.
I think one of the things the pandemic showed us was the importance of residential service, especially from an education standpoint. That was one of the things that had the library start doing some signaling from their building at the parking lot, and I think was a big piece with Mr. Tobar and the Board of Commissioners putting the Wi-Fi signal at all of the fire stations so that those students who were having to attend school through a virtual situation could as much as possible have that. There's been some general logic with the county having interest in trying to make sure that all of their fire stations had access to fiber, that in doing that, there would be a lot of areas at the city that would be passed as well, which kind of created a map of what should be done in the future. And Councilman Reynolds, tell me if I'm correct, I think that was actually part of the general thought process in the EDA grant, too, in terms of getting outside of the Central State Hospital campus. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I do believe that included in that grant were, again, I know at least for the south side, but it may have been even further out into southwest Baldwin County and east Baldwin County across the river.
Right.
It was a pretty expansive plan.
Just a quick question. Do you all hear concerns about affordability of broadband access in the community or of internet access?
I have not heard concerns about affordability. I've just heard concerns about, I don't have it. I think if they had the service, then the affordability becomes a secondary concern. I know one of the things that the school system did during the pandemic was they actually were able to get hotspots, and they deployed those around the county, especially in places like apartment buildings and places like that, so that multiple users could utilize the signals for those for their schooling purposes. But I suspect, you know, that's probably going to be just a limited amount of time that those will be available.
And so I guess my final question for you all, are there things or issues that you all want us to make sure that we are addressing in the goals and then the action steps for this broadband development?
I mean, I think, of course, obviously, the goal is to get as quality of a broadband expanded to as much of the county as is feasibly possible. And I think it probably would be beneficial to look at, you know, a mix of mediums, whether it's fiber or cable or 5G internet access. I'm hoping that the free market is going to fill in a lot of this need as 5G expands throughout the area, but again, a comprehensive approach that really brings the greatest quality service to the greatest number of people, at of course, the most reasonable cost, you know? That, I think, really is our end goal here.
And then I guess you said something about the market really kind of stepping in. What do you see as the city's role in this deployment of, is it through grant funding? What do you see as that role?
Well, I was just...
Go ahead, Hank.
I was just about to say, while it most likely would not be an action item in the comprehensive plan, you know, I don't, it seems to be a rather nebulous process about how you meet the requirements for especially federal broadband expansion money. So I think that's something that we really need to have the technical expertise and the technical support from the Regional Commission, as well as maybe some subject matter experts to work with us to let us know how that process works. I really think being a broadband-ready community is one of the first steps in getting on the radar for that funding, but then just us getting a better idea about how you go about applying to this funding.
I have, unless you all have any other thoughts or questions for me.
I've got one question, and that is from someone who barely knows how to hook a cable up. And the part that I'm missing, and I understand the possibility of grants, I understand getting businesses to invest, but for those areas that none of that's available, what happens? Nothing? I mean, is there, or is there, and I guess what I'm asking is that there are areas that are underserved, and I don't know if that means that they don't have phone lines, they don't have cable lines, or that they don't have the access to the internet or to broadband.
So as a non-expert in this, what I think I can say is it kind of goes back to that mix of mediums as well. So, you know, deploying hard-line fiber and broadband to less dense communities may not be the most cost-effective way for a local government or for an EMC or whomever, but maybe it's a fixed wireless tower that has a one or two-mile radius that has less, or it's that 5G. So I think it's about that mix of mediums that's going to eventually help to provide coverage. But I do think that the state and federal government are kind of figuring out what is the role of local funding in that, and what are those grants able to do. And I know that the state, they've got this Recovery Act money that they're trying to figure out what are the rules for, they've got CDDG CARES Act money that they're still trying to figure out what the rules are for broadband. So I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions about how to leverage those resources.
Do you see a lot of interest from municipalities of going into the internet utility business as far as starting up their own local utilities to provide internet access? And is that something that has been successful and generating revenue for those municipalities?
And Carlos and Hank may have a better sense of this. I can speak a little bit to the region. The region has been, or local governments in the region have been much more about providing the funding to an EMC or so forth for that expansion and deployment. They themselves have not taken over the ownership or that role in building that network. So that's what I have seen from my perspective. I don't know if you all have other thoughts.
Well, one of the things that was part of the discussion with the vendor that I mentioned that was interested in putting the fiber down the, what I call the Augusta corridor, was there was a big question about, did that vendor then operate the service once the fiber was provided? And we spent a good bit of time talking with Columbia County, who actually has an internet and broadband utility. My takeaway from that is while it could have some very positive revenue generation, ultimately, it was a pretty heavy cost to get into it from an operation standpoint and the government actually running the company, quote unquote, that is administering the providing of that Wi-Fi. So I know that Columbia County has done, Mr. Reynolds, and done it well, and they are certainly somebody that we can look at. I know that there are a number of EMCs that are beginning to look at that. One of the things that we may really look out on in terms of our broadband-ready community is what Tri-County EMC announced about six weeks ago that they're doing. They basically are going to provide, ultimately build out a system that provides broadband to all of their customers. So a large portion of the western side of our county will be covered by TriCoGo is the name of the subsidiary company that Tri-County EMC is putting together. So that's going to be huge. I think if I remember the map that Susan shared with me, that that's still going to leave a fairly large area on the east side and maybe kind of the northeast side of the county. So that may be where we end up seeing the need to kind of concentrate, as well as the south side that the EDA grant is looking at. So I'm not necessarily saying it's something that a government should not do, but I am saying that it's something that that government's going to have to spend a whole lot of money upfront to get into, because you're not only dealing with the fiber that you're maintaining, you're then hiring technicians and buying vehicles and front office staff and all those kind of people to run that additional utility. So it can be done, it just takes a good bit of startup capital to get to that point.
And I know one of the questions that we're evaluating is what if a local government builds and owns that infrastructure but leases it out? And I don't know to what extent the Georgia Constitution allows that, but that's still one of the questions that's kind of being evaluated right now.
Yeah, Mr. Tobar is here. He wants to, we're going to let him share some information with you that he wants to share.
I'll be brief. One of the things that our GIS office did was research some information because we wanted to overlay what Tri-County EMC was going to do in Baldwin County, overlay that over the existing broadband service based on DCA's definition, that high up and down speeds. And as City Manager Griffith mentioned, the entire western part of the county is going to be covered. So Alderman Reynolds, a lot has changed since the EDA application was submitted. We just found this out in March of this year, that Tri-County was going to be doing this and rolling this out in the last two years. So as Hank mentioned, the eastern part of the county, which is sparsely populated, is going to be uncovered. One of the interesting things that our GIS analysts discovered was that Baldwin County has a very good and high broadband score in comparison to all the other counties in the state of Georgia. Our numbers are quite comparable to some of the metro Atlanta areas, if you can believe that. There are nine internet service providers in Baldwin County, and the city of Milledgeville has really good coverage. And, you know, so that was an eye-opener for all of us, myself and the Board of Commissioners. And so we are much better off than a lot of communities, and definitely much better off than our surrounding counties. That was it. Thank you. Any other comments, Susan?
No, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of other things. I sent you all a good bit of information on Friday and included the information in your meeting book. I just want to mention a couple of things to see if you have any additional questions on them. One of them is I gave you some information on what we anticipate will be per capita share from the American Rescue Plan Act. You know, we don't know exactly what that dollar figure will be until we get some confirmation, but based on what, on the information that GMA has put together, I feel pretty confident in the number that I shared with you all. We're still waiting for information to come down from the feds on how that can be utilized, but what I'd like to do is just share with you all, if you have specific thoughts on uses for those, if those uses are permitted when we get the guidance from the feds, please let me know what those are. You can just shoot me an email or a text so that we can look at those. Right now, the general information shared with us by the National League of Cities looks like some things are going to be pretty wide open in terms of potential and maybe even looking at some infrastructure improvements with some of this money. So I'll keep you informed about that and let you know as we hear what's going to happen with that. The really good thing, in my opinion, the legislation states that the funding is funneled to us through the state, but the state does not have the opportunity to keep any of that funding like they did with the CARES Act money. So I think that's going to be advantageous for us in terms of the amount that we get and what we can do with it. Lastly, I mentioned to you that based on the requirements of the current Governor's Executive Order that we're under that went into effect on April 8th, we most likely will open city parks and the greenway back up for reservations beginning May 1. I'm still looking at potential dates to fully reopen City Hall and how we may structure our pandemic plan at that point in time in order to deal with that reopening, but I will certainly keep you informed about that. We do have our resolutions passed by you in terms of our state of emergency does allow us to have... allow us to have council meetings through electronic means through the, the last meeting in June, and we can certainly discuss the potential for even extending that after that point in time if, if we need to. And I will share, share those resolutions with you that you all passed. We extended that, I think about October, no, somewhere along in there that we, we voted on it around October, just went ahead and extended it through the end of the fiscal year.
The fourth or fifth extension.
Right. We do have, we, we are getting close to time for, for budget discussions and budget hearings, and we'll be getting that information out to you very soon. I, we will have a presentation at the first work session in May, but then I, I don't plan to have any presentations at any work sessions after that until we get our budget agreed upon, so that we'll have the, the work sessions in order to discuss the budget. And of course, we can certainly have call work session meetings to discuss that as well if we, if we need to. So with that said, I'll entertain any questions about anything that I've talked about here tonight or anything that I emailed you towards the end of last week, if anybody needs any All right. Well, Ms. Shinholster, I'll turn things back over to you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or anything by the council? And anything that was discussed or anything that you've received by email or otherwise? If not, then we'll just adjourn this meeting until time for the council meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Okay. Okay. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Uh.
Ms. Walden?
Uh.
Ms. Shinholster?
Uh.
Ms. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Chambers here? Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
We'll, we'll see you all back in about 21 minutes.